I'd like to open the December 2nd, 2019 Harwich Port of Selectments meeting. Let me start by reading the statement that as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and autotaping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or videotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. I'll start with, you join me with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joe, you start with a weekly briefing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The following is the construction schedule weekly update. This was submitted on November 26th, 2019. The one-week look ahead for this week of December 2nd through the 6th. The mainline sewer crew number one is installation on Route 39, west from Spencer's Trace. Service and sideline stubs there continues to be the need for detouring in that area, and there will also continue installation on Old Salty Lane. Mainline Sewer Crew Number Two continues their installation work on Route 137, and again, detours are still in place there. The two-week look ahead for the week of December 9th. Mainline Sewer Crew Number One continues installation on Route 39, and again, detours may be necessary depending upon how much progress they make. We did have a meeting on a related matter today, and they are hoping to clear out of Route 39 sometime next week if all goes well with weather and progress. Mainline Sewer Crew Number One will commence installation on Old Heritage Way. Mainline Sewer Crew Number Two will continue on Route 137, and the detours will still be in place. For the third-week look ahead for the week of December 16th, Mainline Sewer Crew Number One will continue installation working on Old Heritage Way and Liberty Trail, while Mainline Sewer Crew Number Two continues on Route 137 with the detours in place. To Chairman, I also just wanted to update the board. I mentioned last week that due to miscommunications and lack of connection, there is a moratorium on extending hours of work based out of the grant that was, the request that was granted two weeks ago. I did want to update the board that we had a very helpful discussion today with representatives from Robert B. Hour, CDM Smith, Weston and Sampson, as well as staff. We think we've come up with a pretty good plan of action going forward, and I hope to have that completed to be able to present it next week's weekly update.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any questions for Joe? I just, Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question, Joe. What would constitute the divide between, yeah, we're going to continue pushing on even though the weather's not great, and no, we're not going to do anything today?
I think they would say that it's what they refer to today as dirt mitigation, meaning if it's weather that's causing the hole to fill in again, you know, which they're really battling against that in some areas with the depth. And then, of course, safety of crew and those around it.
What about snow?
We talked about that possibility. I don't have a clear sense, but I can find out. But I think the effort is really going to be based upon what's it doing to the impact of the safety of the road, to the crews, and to the project. But I can get more specifics on that if you'd like.
Thank you, Joe. I will note that we've questioned, I see we have police here, we've questioned the intersection of Church Street and Old Queen Anne Road, and there was a traffic help there at that intersection today. I felt sorry for the, for your colleague. It was a miserable day to be out there, but it's appreciated if the neighborhood can see that police presence there and also in the streets. So, thank you for that. Anything else for Joe or questions on it? Next, then, to the, anyone else for public comment or announcement?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Richard Wastek from the Harwich Board of Assessors. We were here three weeks ago discussing classification hearing. And at our meeting tonight, the board has discussed, as we talked about, creating a hardship exemption for those under the age of 65. So I'd like, if you could at some time, Mr. Chairman, to agenda an item to come and have that discussion. That would require us filing legislation, which we've been successful in the past. And just as a reminder that at our meeting, we had the discussion of how do we address some of the difficulties with our younger families and younger people living in the community. We discussed filing legislation, but we would need your blessing to do so. So we'd like to have a discussion formally on the agenda to look at filing legislation to create a hardship exemption tax credit for those under the age of 65.
Richard, what timeframe? Are you talking week, two weeks longer?
It's something that's going to take a while to file legislation. I know you're busy.
I mean, to bring it back to us.
You tell me when you can schedule it, Mr. Chairman. Conveniently, we'll be here.
Okay. It's probably sooner rather than better because
We can be here in a week.
Soon we'll be in a full-time budget discussion.
We can be here in a week. Finally, a reminder, as from the classification, the first actual tax bill will be coming out the end of this month. And as we discussed, with the valuation up and the actual mill rate being higher this year, people can file an abatement to challenge their valuation on their property. People will see their taxes going up, and filing an abatement does nothing to challenge your taxes being increased. All the abatement process can do is challenge the valuation on your property. I'll be here for the next few weeks to remind the general public of that. And for our snowbirds who go south, the abatement application has to be filed, no later than February 1st.
And that abatement is online?
It will be online. Once the bill comes out, you have 30 days from when the bill is sent out to file that abatement application.
Thank you. Ed?
On your request for special legislation, if it's a home rule petition, it not only needs our blessing, but it needs town meetings.
I understand. I understand, but we start with you, with your approval before we can do anything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Brad Willis. I'm a member of the Harwich Fire Department here in town, firefighter, paramedic, here to talk to the board and the town, again, about homeless for the holidays. Again, this is a program that we've been involved in for the last five years. This is our fifth year. It's been going on for 18 years across Cape Cod at various locations. This year, we're looking for another good turnout. We've had great things from the town in the past and the town residents. Basically, what we're doing is trying to supplement the family pantry and their, their mission to help families, local families in need, especially at this time of year. I'll give you some numbers from the previous year totals, what we've collected. In 2018, we collected 1,087 toys, 1,620 pounds of food, and $6,460 of cash and gift cards that was all donated to the family pantry. And the toys were actually given to Toys for Tots as well. But over the previous four years, we've actually collected just over 4,500 toys, around 9,000 pounds of food, and about $25,000 in cash and gift cards. Again, and all the, all the money has gone to the family pantry with the toys being split between the Toys for Tots program. Really, the toy day is the, the family pantry's big push for this time of year. They're trying to help parents give their kids a good Christmas for people who are struggling. I did a little bit of research before I came here and went on their website. They, 1,000 kids get a good Christmas. So there's a lot of kids in the community who are counting on people's generosity. Some of the things that they're looking for, family-type board games, puzzles, especially for the older kids, they're looking for gift cards. If anybody's feeling generous and they want to buy a gift card, $50 gift cards to the Cape Cod Mall or Amazon.com. Those are some suggested items from the pantry's website itself. So we're going to be down in Brooks Park, starting on Wednesday, December 4th, and we'll be there straight 4 hours a day for 103 consecutive hours until 3:00 PM on Sunday, the 8th. And come on by, we'll be down there. We're there, like I said, 24 hours a day for donations. If people want to come down and just hang out with the first responders. We're really there in solidarity for the people who are struggling, and it's the least that we can do to help the community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I can, it's a very friendly group of you guys, too, so.
Yeah, we try. Thanks a lot.
Thanks very much. Others for public comments?
Hi, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director, and I just wanted to publicly thank everyone who attended this weekend's event. The cultural center was booming. I don't think there was a parking spot for three blocks, somebody said. I didn't give mine up, sorry. But it was a lot of local vendors, thank you. I know some of you were there, I really appreciate that. I also wanted to just let you know I had been before you asking if we could do the light display. We are still doing it, we're running just a little bit behind. The weather was not cooperating. So that will be up certainly by this weekend, and I'm working with the police on that. But I just wanted people to know, if you watch our Facebook and the sign out front, we'll start advertising as soon as it's ready to go, but definitely by this weekend. And lastly, our mitten tree is up, if anybody wants to pick up their mittens. And I certainly support the fire department 1,000 percent. I try and bring 52 gifts, so I'll challenge all of you. That's one gift a week, so I'll see you over there doing that. But really, I, I hope that everyone does it, they're an amazing group of people, so, thanks.
What can I say? You set a high bar.
Good evening, Cindy Williams from the Harwich Chamber of Commerce. Just to continue with all the holiday festivities, this Friday kicks off the Christmas in Harwich with the Harwich Port Stroll. 5:30 is the tree lighting and caroling. Another item that we have taken on in partnering with White's Flowers and 400 East is the Festival of Trees, which also is a fundraiser for the family pantry. So there'll be trees at 400 East, the Chamber, and White's Flowers, both Friday and Saturday evening. Santa arrives 6:15 by fire truck. And then on Saturday, just a couple of new things. We have a Disney author at the Chase Library in the afternoon, breakfast with Santa up at the Pilgrim of Sonic Lodge. Tickets are still available for that and for the Trolley to Christmasy Town on both Saturday and Sunday. Any questions, they can call the Chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else for public comments, announcements? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda, Steve?
Consent agenda, vote to authorize Chairman to sign Powers &amp; Sullivan LLC agreement. And B, vote annual liquor license renewals through 2021. It shows 2020, but 2021 as listed in the packet.
Second.
Second? Is there any discussion? Don?
I beg of you to put licenses in the new business in the future.
Yeah. Michael?
Just pointing out one error in case anyone else picked it up. Ember's listed as a package store, but Joe assures me that that change is coming from the state, and it was a mistake on the state's part.
We have, we have that in writing. So it can be approved as we understand it to be, meaning restaurant.
With the correction.
Yep, they've already made the correction on their end.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried? Thank you. New business? We move on to the annual meetings with the board and Harwich Youth Services?
Good evening. I'm Meredith Henderson, a member of the Harwich Youth Services Committee. The Harwich Youth Services Committee met eight times during the past 12 months, and two new members are myself and Holly Tivano, who are both parents of kids in the Monomoy School System, as well as
Stand up.
As well as our youth volunteer, who is Annalee Slangelier, also my daughter. We support the practice and work of the town youth and family counselor, who has a full caseload and participates in the following boards, groups, and commissions. She participates in the Barnstable County Regional Substance Abuse Commission, the Substance Abuse Prevention Council, Massachusetts Opioid Prevention Council, Monomoy Regional School District Crisis Response Team, Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition, Harwich Children's Fund, slash The Friends of the Harwich Youth, and also the Behavioral Health Innovators Incorporated. The Harwich Youth Services is a collaborative committee working with schools and the community to inform the public about resources, educational events, and supports for Harwich youth and families. During the period of December 2018 to November 2019, Harwich Youth Services focused on the following initiatives and events. Sheila House obtained funding for from this anonymous survey, informs the schools and the community on the trends with regards to risky behavior, as well as offering a comparison to surveys for two years for the past eight years. The data also informs Harwich Youth Services and the schools about responses to trends and risky behaviors. The data from this survey can be found publicly on the Monomoy Schools website. And two of the surprising findings were the increase in student vaping, as well as the reporting of riding in cars with drivers that had been drinking. So some of the parent universities will focus on some of those moving forward. Continue to, we continue to support the promotion of the Harwich Children's Fund, The Friends of the Harwich Youth, a nonprofit community collaborative made up of school and community members who provide periodic assistance for youth. Any Monomoy school youth in need from towns other than Chatham or Harwich can apply for assistance from HCF through a parent or guardian with contacts at all schools in the Monomoy District. Areas of help include clothing, food, medical, dental, vision, hearing, enrichment, school support, and holiday needs. Each situation is assessed and needs are determined. If a referral is needed with regards to the request, the HCF, F-H-Y, will give the family contact information for support and services. The HCF is currently in the process of the outerwear and holiday gift drive, and twice as many families have applied for the program during its second year. Another thing that has been supported by the youth committee is that we hosted the Monday Night Summer Concert Series sponsored by TD Bank during the month of July this summer. This continues to be a well-attended, popular event with similar concerts in five other Cape towns, and it was co-hosted by the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod, who obtained the funding. We also helped to promote the Second Annual Yogi's Unite for Recovery in June of 2019 that was held at the Monomoy Regional High School. This event raises money to fund important programs at the Behavioral Health and Innovators Incorporated, including an after-school teen program for youth struggling with substance abuse and a development of a prevention toolkit featuring peer heroes in recovery. In collaboration with the Chatham Recreation and Sharon Stark, we hosted three Monomoy middle school socials during the months of March, May, and October. These events attracted more than 100 youth, grades five to seven, to both, from both communities to the community centers in Harwich and Chatham to enjoy safe, fun activities. The next social is scheduled for January 2020 at the Harwich Community Center. We also promoted a campaign that rolled out by the Barnstable County Regional Substance Abuse Council, Escape the Vape, educating parents, youth, and community members about the latest science on vaping, as well as the risk factors. For information about the vaping toolkit developed by the county, you can go to the website, www.mychoicematters.net/vaping-toolkit. Kim Slade from the county presented at a parent university in October, where parents learned about the risks of vaping and the development of the brain. And to let you know, on Wednes, this Wednesday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM, the Harwich Youth Services will host a parent university at the high school in the library. The topic is the importance of parent messaging and the choices made by teens. The youth risk behavior survey that was administered during the past decade overwhelmingly points to the importance about open discussion between teens and their parents about the dangers of early alcohol and drug use and how parents play the most significant role in shaping decisions. The projects in works, in the works for the coming year are continuing to support the middle school socials in both towns of Harwich and Chatham and sponsoring speaker events for parents and community members about topics directly related to teen wellness. And that is our report for the year. And we would also like to just let you know that we are very excited that Jeff and Rebecca Craig will be voted in to our committee and really make it a well-rounded committee. So although we can't stay for their vote, we're very excited about them coming on.
Your report wears me out just listening to it. What does your committee do in your spare time then?
You know, a little of this, a little of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's a great report. Any questions or comments? Thanks again. Don?
I ask this periodically because Sheila and I go way back. How many of your type of position are there anywhere on Cape Cod?
So the, the only two places that I'm aware of are Falmouth Human Services, which has been around for quite a long time, and it's a, it's an agency because the population in Falmouth is, is quite large. I think it's three times Harwich, or something like that. So they have a combination of, of regular staff and then per diem staff, mostly counseling. And, and then Mashpee also has Mashpee Human Services, and it's one person, just like myself. This model is huge in, in Massachusetts. There's over 70 youth counselors, about 25 of whom I network with quarterly, you know, in Southeast Mass. But on the Cape, just, just three different entities.
I say that because we should be proud as a community that we've actually worried about our children, this, for a generation, actually.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thanks.
Anything else for Sheila while we have her on the stand? Okay, thanks again. Moving next, then, is to the Cemetery Commission.
So, Mr. Chairman, we received a call today from the Cemetery Director asking that they be pushed off until December 16th. The members had some schedule conflicts, and we want to make sure we can have them fully represented on the 16th.
Okay. We shall do that. The Harwich Energy.
They were exhausted.
They were exhausted. Try as I, try as much as I can. I fail sometimes. Moving next to the, we'll, we'll see where they are, and it is, it is coming back. Next on the agenda is vote to approve the appointment of Charles Walkley to the Bikes Committee as a full member. Is there any?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ed?
I'd like to move approval of Charles Walkley to the Bike Ways Committee as a full member with the term to expire. We know?
2021.
2021.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Not at all? Ed?
I know, from personally, he made a great dentist. I'm sure he'll make a great bike whiz.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is the vote to appointment of Donald McCaskill to the Harwich Disability Rights Committee as a full member. And, Don?
Despite his lineage, he's represented on the board. I move that we approve his appointment as a full member to expire 21, June 30th.
Second.
Second? Any discussion, Michael?
Just a comment, that is my father. I'll announce it now. I did call the state, there's no conflict of interest. But as my mother on the Cemetery Committee, when that blew up, I was accused several times of putting a family member on, so we'll, I'll readdress it, I'm sure, if there's a contentious issue on this committee.
Not for me. He's helped us do repair service for many years.
Got my refrigerator going.
And we asked for people on the committee that, if not handicapped, have direct experience with someone handicapped. And based on his resume, he has that, so he has that value, which is not only brings more expertise, but it's actually required by the state that we have that, those credentials, so. I'm happy he's applying. That doesn't mean I won't pick on you about it, Michael, but we're happy about it.
You know, Don can make the nomination, they're both Donalds.
But he has fixed my washer and my refrigerator, so I can vouch for it.
So we all have to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote to approve the appointment of Rebecca Craig to the Youth Services Committee as an alternate.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
With, with a term to expire.
2020.
June 30th.
21st.
2021.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move Jeffrey Quaid be nominated to the Youth Services Committee as a full member.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
You skipped him. Term to be run until 2021.
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. E is, a little bit more discussion, and that is designation of the local planning committee per the request of the town planner. Joe, you, I'll turn this over to you.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, you may recall that a few weeks back, I had indicated to the board that the town planner had noticed the administration department and the board by way of memo that should be included in your packets tonight, back in October. She is out of the office today, so she wouldn't be attending tonight. But I did ask if she had anything to add, and she feels that the memo stands for itself. Excuse me. And you can see in her memo that it's her recommendation that where the requirement of designating a local planning committee falls to the, to the Board of Selectmen. And it is true that the local planning committee could be the planning board. She's asking that representatives from the boards listed in her memo be designated to constitute this committee.
Good. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to point out that the first iteration of the comprehensive plan, that it passed town meeting unanimously, there was a reason for that. And it basically followed this blueprint. Every was given their section to make sure that it all made sense when it was reassembled. But the idea of having, we have about a half a million committees, so it's probably really important to make sure that we get, you know, a narrow, robust look at things by those committees. So I agree with Charlene, we probably need to broaden this out. The last one just was the planning board, and that kind of changed the entire plan.
Any other comments? Ed?
No.
Michael?
I have no comments.
Steve?
I thought her memo was great.
Me, too.
I will emphasize what Don just said, because for this to be successful, we really need wide participation. We have a lot of things going on in town, wastewater is one. We also have traffic, parking, the whole thing. And the more we can have discussions on this, the better off we'll be, so. I appreciate that. Question I do have, I guess, Joe backed you, through you to Charlene, is in addition to the committee Charlene's listed is, will there be consideration of one or two public participants to also be included in that discussion?
Sure.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just
Any disagreement with that, yeah?
I'm just raising that question. Ed, did you, and Don?
That's the point I was going to make, that, you know, there's, I think, 12 different boards appointed, and we'll have somebody appointed from, and they will all, in some ways, be representing their committee. And it might be good to have, say, three generalist people that aren't, are just members of the public that aren't serving on a committee.
Thank you, Ed. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I was going to make that same comment. When the first plan was in final draft, while we didn't have people on committees that were at-large, if you will, in the community, the one thing that we tried to do is get the draft and identify major stakeholders in the community and give them a draft. Because the idea of something this important just going on a public hearing where nobody shows up, you just assume nobody was upset about it. We got past that because I know that we went out to Robert B. Hours, we went out to Jimmy Marsline, and everybody had distributed copies of the draft so that they could have proactive input on it, knowing that somebody was going to listen to them.
Okay. Anyone else? Comment? If not, it sounds good. Thanks, Charlene, for our work into this.
Sure. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, then, there are 11 boards of the town that are represented. The 12th is the Chamber of Commerce. Is it the intention of the board to, say, add three members at large?
That would be my request.
Okay. Then I'll work with Charlene to get that back to the board. So we'll reach out to all those entities and, and then work on getting the three at large.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator Search Process Discussion. We're early in the game on this. What I've mentioned in the past is, is that, you know, we have an acting Town Administrator. We have very strong department heads. So I wanted to move, not in a panic, but in some caution going forward. So I think about, we haven't had, obviously, a discussion about this. I'm looking probably early part of January to form a search committee that gets us past the holidays. My initial thought, just throwing this out, is on the search, we have two of our selectmen on the search committee. I was then asked to get, it keeps the search committee relatively small in size, but ask some people that we know some outside participation joining that search committee. Again, it's not the planning, but we do want a broad input into the people we bring in front of the board. And other than that, we obviously have had an old discussion on whether we, who we should rehire, even if we should. I think that, whether we have the wherewithal to contact people ourselves and consider candidates. My final comment is, is that, as I said last week, I think we had a member suggesting that one of our community members be appointed to town committee, that we want to be, we'll be very careful. This is an open and fair process. Otherwise, that's my very initial thoughts. So I appreciate comments. Don, you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just throwing this out, I've been on a bunch of search committees. The most recent one was for the county administrator. We're going to actually wind up hiring whoever it is.
Right.
I'm not sure what the value of part of the board being part of the initial interview process, but I've given it a lot of thought as a perspective setup so that we could come up with making sure that everybody on the board gets somebody that they're comfortable with on there. And rather than going majority for everything, I'm wondering what the possibility is, or if anybody would consider that each of the selectmen pick a person from the community or whatever as an interview person or that. And then reserve two other positions for at-large, in whatever manner the board wants to do that. That would total up to seven, which is somewhat manageable. Anything bigger starts.
There goes suggestion. Any other comments on that? Michael?
Makes sense. The other piece is, can we get, I haven't been around for the last two town administrators' search processes. Can we get the process that was followed?
We can. I'm sure we can.
What search firms are out there?
Yeah.
A little bit more detail as far as what our options are.
Yeah.
Good point.
Steve?
To Mike's point, too, maybe we should see if we can find a little bit more. How about the group at UMass that assists the towns, just to see if they make any sense for us.
Yeah.
That's what the county used.
Yeah. They were one of the firms that we interviewed last, last time, and we chose, I forget the name of the company. We chose someone else, but I was not clear what the difference was in my mind. I think that's a good suggestion. Let me, Ed, you were going to comment. If not, Don, let me work with you, and we'll fine tune that. We'll get some more search firms, and we'll come back with a, on paper, a process and attend to the schedule moving forward. Don, then Ed?
Don's over there.
Michael?
The other Doc. You're the other Doc. Now, one thing that sticks in my mind, too, is a conversation with the board with what the last job description was.
We'll schedule that first. We're going, I'm going to schedule that this month.
I'd like to get the board as close to the same page as we can. The other thing that sticks in my mind was the comment that was made in the newspaper, The Chronicle, by the outgoing town administrator about the salary of $165,000 a year being demoralizing. So could we, could we please have a search done, or study done, of what other towns are paying the town administrators? But specifically, town administrators, not town managers. But can we get an idea if we're, if it is a demoralizing salary and include benefits? And I would imagine that's a vote of the board because we're asking Joe to do something else.
Yeah.
But I'd like to understand what other towns are making and how $165,000 a year is demoralizing.
Steve?
That's ridiculous. I would think, you know, we even as a group could research that and not put it all on Joe's, on Joe's lap if we wanted to. I mean, it's one of the things we could do. It wouldn't be very hard to do.
As long as we do an analysis, analysis on benefits, I'm fine with that.
Ed, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there are surveys that we, the board can avail themselves on through the Mash Municipal Association. There is an upcoming Cape and Islands Administrators' Managers' Meeting, and I could bring it up to the group as well.
Okay.
So there could be at least two sources.
I think they actually have this. I think Joe's right. I think they have this material, this information that we're looking for right at the fingertips. I think we can get it pretty quickly.
Go get it then, Steve.
Okay.
Michael?
Yeah, it's my understanding that there's a few different types of administrators. So we have a, we have specifically have a weak town administrator. If there's, if there's another form of town administrator and a town manager, those numbers are, until we change our charter, is fairly useless to me.
Right. You can marry Apple.
Yeah.
The town size, too.
So going forward, one of the, you know, which was raised by the comment of another placing another thing on Mr. Powers is a question which is not on the agenda today, but we ought to bring back for a discussion of whether or not we want to engage in some additional help in the that we don't have anything slip through and that we get to town meeting in good stead and well-prepared.
I'll bring that back.
Yeah.
That deserves a part of the discussion. You're right, it's not on. And I think, but we have to discuss some key points. One is, is to have a discussion so we come as close as possible to a common agreement of what to, what we expect of a town administrator. A comparison so we know what, what the reasonable salary benefits packages are. A, am I covering my microphone so I don't? And we'll look at members. I think that's what I did, Don. And timing. And the second item will be, Ed, to your point, what should we do in the interim before we get it filled? All right. Thank you. We move on. Sorry, I didn't get, I haven't given it a lot more thought at this point, but we'll, we'll get it going. Contract, Chapter 90, project request. Joe?
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I heard from the DPW Director today, excuse me, his request is that we pull this at this time pending the outcome of our internal bid process versus the Cape bid from with staff, that we want to tie this request into the bidding mechanism. So at this point, we're going to hold off on this request.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? Michael?
That was going to be my question, because he refers to in his memo that it had to be done before snow, without snow tomorrow. So I assume we have some time now?
Yeah. So as I mentioned last week for the procurement discussion, and it's somewhat of a dated memo, that was predicated on if we were able to get a bid out for the patching job internally, knowing that we weren't going to be able to get that done before the snow flies and knowing that the plants are closing. So now we're working internally through procurement on a bid to be probably executed in February and then match that up with a bid that we expect the county to do in March. And we can time that for when the plants open up again.
Okay. Did I answer your question, Michael? Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Old Business is a traffic safety committee. Second reading, you wish to take the, explain this to us?
Good evening. Sherry Beltis, Traffic Safety. The first reading was put forth, and there was some opposition to not having speed bumps. You asked us to put another sentence in there. I personally didn't work on this. There was a work group within the committee, so I'm going to let Linda address it.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you sitting back there, Linda.
I snuck in. Hello, gentlemen. We did add in the, under the introduction, the third paragraph, we added, we discussed it at length, and we decided it would be fair to say, applicants may seek through the application process an exemption to the prohibition on speed bumps and speed humps on town roads. So that gives somebody the ability, even though the policy would prefer not to have them, that if there is an extenuating circumstance, they can put that in their application, and it will be addressed. And we hope that that finds favor.
Thank you, Linda. As I recall, that answers our concern that we wanted a way out, so it wasn't absolute, no, no speed bumps, so. Now, does that, does that cause us or you now to, to, if we were doing other Board of Health or other committees, to try to put some edges around what would be acceptable as a waiver?
The Board of Health?
As an example, if you have a waiver for Board Health and Conservation, you can get a waiver, but it has
Got it. That's what we're expecting. That, that is what we're expecting would happen. Someone would fill out an application and say there were the rationale made a speed bump to be appropriate for that area. We would then suggest they go through.
Okay.
That would be, I don't think we need more waivers. It's going to be, this is the application.
Right.
And it will go forward if it seems appropriate.
And that will go, that would go back to your committee at that time to make a decision. Okay? And if they object to, like other committees, I guess they could
Hey, come right here to you guys.
Fill it to us, and we'd have some say, but. Michael?
That third paragraph, Linda, it says to the fire chief for review and assessment. Oh, sorry, not the third.
That's a private road.
Second paragraph, that's just for private roads?
Yes, that's for private roads. They go to the fire chief.
So right now, the proposal is to have the Traffic Safety Committee hear the appeal on why they should have speed humps or speed bumps.
That would be our proposal, yes. I mean, this is going through the, going to go, the application will be made to the, you know, the Department of Public Works. And there would be reviews done by the police, the fire, the town, and the fire department, and the town engineer. So it seems like we've kind of got enough people looking at something to give their opinions as to how something should or should not go forward and in what manner.
And then, just to Larry's point, a final appeal would be the Board of Selectmen.
Absolutely. It always is.
But no thought of putting that into our new policy?
I don't think it's in any other policies. But if you would like that, put in that a final appeal, if it gets rejected, we can add that as well.
I would like it spelled out.
Steve, I think first. Are you okay? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might point out that they don't have any real enforcement power, so they wouldn't necessarily have to go to the Board of Selectmen if there was
Absolutely. Because this is a committee, you're correct, Don. This is a committee. So we would be making a recommendation, for example, to say, no speed bump on this road because of the following reasons. If someone then appeals, this is the place they go for anything. The appeal goes to the Board of Selectmen.
The committee is an advisory committee, and under the, the way it was set up with Chris Clark, that he was the administrator of the committee. So things went to him, from him, to us.
Michael?
Just wanted to point out, Waterways Committee spells out that the appeal goes to John Rindman, and then goes to the Board of Selectmen.
I actually think
And it seems to work.
I actually think it'd be, be good, just as informational, even though it's already the process, just to tell people upfront, this is the way it goes.
How about if, under application, there is a local process, so second page, middle, application, application shall be made, local review process, local review process shall be reviewed by blah, 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 notified within 45 days. Appeals, it's off the top of my head, appeals.
It's possible to appeal to
It is possible to appeal a, just a recommendation directly to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Is that okay to put those words in there?
And I agree with what Don, you know, it's already the process, but, you know, I see as that, Michael's informational. I entertain a motion to, Michael?
Just for a matter of process, first reading, second reading, and then we can vote, Don? Or was it first reading, second reading, and then third reading we vote? This came up once before, that's why I asked.
I think we can vote on a second reading, actually.
I think we can move on, too, but it's purely speculative. I don't think that there's actually a rule that says it has to go to a third reading. You have to do the first reading and then go to a second reading.
I think we, go ahead.
Yeah. The requirement of your policy is second reading before vote, so the board could vote tonight or take any other action. But you've met your rules under your policy.
Michael?
I move that we approve the new traffic calming policy as presented.
With the addition of appeals sentence. Second.
Any other question? Anyone in the audience? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your work.
We'll get you a revised draft with that sentence and
Perfect.
Go with the flow. Thank you.
And we'll keep you busy with all this, then.
Hi, Liz.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on is the CVEC, round one add or discussion. Joe, I'll let you open it, then we'll turn it over. You introduce the, our guest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So you have, excuse me, my memo dated today where staff has reviewed the request. Excuse me. And this follows up on prior notice that was given to the towns through CVEC going back to June of 2018, that this was anticipated. Staff recommends approval, but also defer to Liz Argo to speak to her letter to the board dated October 2nd.
Liz, thanks for coming back to us. This is, we're trying to understand and be sure we make the right move, so.
Yep. So Liz Argo, manager for Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative. Usually when we ask for the round one add or extension, which we've done two years, this will be our second year asking for the extension. Before we do that, we let you know how you, how the town has performed, how CVEC has been effective for you over the course of the previous fiscal year, which would be FY '19. So if you don't mind what I'll do, the packet that I just handed out gives you some highlights. I don't want to take too much time, but I'll go over them and most of all hit on what's, how Harwich did this year with the landfill, cap landfill PV project, for instance, and some of the projects you have upcoming, because you have quite a few. And then I'll return to the add or extension for a motion, if that's okay with you. So everybody is somewhat familiar with the Cape and Vineyard Electric Energy. Our members are all town representatives, so the towns are CVEC. We've had five initiatives. We call them initiatives, and that brought forward some minor installations that seemed huge back in 2010, but now we realize they were smaller. On school roofs, we have round one, which includes the Harwich cap landfill photovoltaic installation, which is still one of the largest that CVEC has installed on behalf of our towns. Round two was more roofs and some public lands, a lot of installations at Dennis Yarmouth High School, and the airport has a huge installation running down the length of the runways. And round three, we have just had those projects come online, seven roof installations. None of those are in Harwich, but your neighbors, Chatham and Yarmouth, have roof installations through round three. And round four, Harwich is definitely a participant in round four. So we have a couple of projects. We have the community center. Carolyn is here. She's been working with us on the community center solar canopy that will go in to provide both shelter and power. We also have a solar canopy at the Harwich Police Facility, which is over there on 28. That will be, you already have solar canopy, oh, sorry, you have ground mounts on raised structures over there. So we're going to do something to sort of match that with solar canopies and some installations on the roof. That will probably include a battery as well. So we're, as we go forward, we're looking at resilience for these emergency shelters and first responder facilities. You also have two projects at the golf course. There's going to be a ground mount that will feed the There's going to be a ground mount that will feed the maintenance building, and the cart barn will get roof PV installed on the roof to feed the electric carts that are going in at the golf course. And I do want to give a shout out to the people we've been working with, like Carolyn. Leo, of course, is the president. Leo Kukunas is the president of Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative. He's, keeps us going. Sean Libby has been great. Roman Greer has been great. Griffin Rider has been great. So you have a lot of town people, Charlene Greenlaw's been great, working with C V E C to make it all possible. And I do want to give also a shout out to Chris Clark, because he's been working really hard on the round four projects as well for about a year. He's also worked really hard to get the power from Oak Street into the golf course, which is a, quite an accomplishment. I'm not sure if you're all up to speed on that one, but it's, he's accomplished something pretty great there. We also have an electric vehicle initiative, and we have brought forward electric vehicles and charging stations for different towns. Our colleague, my colleague at, at C V E C is available if, if Harwich wants to keep looking at that further. So, Joe maybe is probably aware of it, and we can have Evan reach back out. We provide consultancy services, so we've worked with, we're working with Dennis, Provincetown, Yarmouth, and Sandwich, another option. But maybe the most important thing to note is we've saved the towns and the participants, which include the schools, over thirteen million dollars. So, ours ramp up rather quickly now that we have so much installed. But, and, and while we harp on the, the green backs, I think it's really important also to note that that's equivalent to a huge amount of greenhouse gas reduction that we've affected, thanks to the towns wanting us to do the important work.
Liz, just very briefly, excuse me.
Yes, please.
We skipped over the schools. What, what have they done for solar?
So Dennis Yarmouth, as I mentioned, they have a couple of fields. They have the Emmy Small Installation, which you can see from Higgins Crowell. They also have an, over at the high school, which you can see from Station Avenue. The roof of the, the high school is covered with solar. The Wixon School has a field of solar over there on, I think it's Old Chatham Road. And they're doing battery as well. We have a, which I was going to get to, a battery project that we got a one-point-five-million grant from the state to put in at D Y High School, because that's a regional emergency shelter. Monomoy is also doing PV. They have been a participant in the C V, C V E C programs to buy net metering credits, which is a way of, A, getting savings, but also supporting renewable energy. But they are in round four and are going to be getting solar installation on the roof of the new high school.
And as I recall, Cape Cod Tech is also heavily involved with solar.
But not through C V E C.
Through C V E C.
So they may have a project. The beauty of going through C V E C is we have it down pat. Our requests for proposals are, they're already developed. We don't have to recreate the, the wheel. We have great relationships with the vendors, and we get great responses because we usually bundle projects. And that way, when, when developers are looking at what participating and answering RFPs, they get very hungry, because they have sometimes as many as twenty projects in a, an RFP. So, for instance, in round four, which you guys are a participant in, we had twenty projects, and we had nineteen developers respond to our RFP, because of the fact that it's, it's great pickings. So, to carry on, we are looking to have more rounds, and we also, very critically for, for Harwich, and this, we can move into the Harwich specific stuff, community solar. One of the projects that I didn't mention, which is your Harwich As of Right, that's your Green Communities As of Right site that you put aside for solar or some kind of renewable project. That will be developed, and it'll be a lease arrangement. The town will get an annual fee for using that land, and on top of that, we're hoping to create a community solar overlay, if you will. And what that means is that through the town, residents or commercial businesses can ask to participate in that solar installation. So this is for, for companies or residents who can't do it at their home, whether it's for cap, they don't have the capital, or they don't have the, the right orientation on their house. They can still get involved in, in solar by participating in community solar, and they get a reduction on their electric bill. So that's an offering that will come through as well and be sponsored by the town of Harwich. The terms and conditions have yet to be hammered out, so we're not actively advertising this yet. We need to build the project before we can make the offer, so.
And this puts, this, excuse me, again, this, I know I've been contacted by some, some of these firms that do this, so this, this will be actively, you'll be competing against a private...
We'll be competing against those, those companies that are basically taking all of the, the income and pocketing it. Instead of they, them pocketing it, you'll pocket it. I, I shouldn't mislead. The developers are still going to get a, a nice benefit from offering the community solar, but it's, you are more closely involved. It's your land, you're getting a lease payment from the effort, so. And then, on the next page of your presentation is the FY nineteen production report, and it's the, the totals by year at the top. It shows what C V E C projects, and with all of our projects bundled together, have done in FY seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. You can see the net benefit is the, really the critical piece there at the, the farthest right-hand column. You can see we just keep kind of climbing up in terms of money saved for all of our towns and participants. Then, the next grouping is FY two thousand nineteen by participant, and Harwich is down there towards the middle. Again, I think what we're all here to talk about is the net benefit, which is, again, the final column to the right. And you can see that this year, your net benefit is four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars that your, basically your cap landfill project has earned you. And when we get the other projects up and running, you will have to look at further pages, because then you'll have your projects broken out by system on further pages. At this point, I'm not going to take you through the next pages, because you, you don't have any other projects at this point.
Liz, I can't, excuse me, I keep interrupting you.
That's fine. That's what you're supposed to do.
Could you comment on the, on the... Tell them we're home. Could you comment on the, the trend of Harwich's net benefit, the, so it's usually, is it going up, going down?
It's going up. So just, pretty much, you know, in a, the same, it's, it's in lockstep with all of the projects' benefits going up. And there's two reasons that, actually, for, for the Harwich project to keep going up. We had a very good year in terms of solar resource last year. The year before, we didn't. It still was above the previous year, but we know from looking at our, our trends that it wasn't a great year. It was, it was a lot of snow, and it was very cold. That cold snap took Eversource, took, took the grid out last year. I don't know if you remember. But we were without power in December. Your, your savings numbers in dollars going up also, because the net metering credit value, which is tied to the cost of electricity, is going up. Cost of electricity is going up, therefore so is the net metering credit that you get for producing renewable energy power.
That answers my second question. What, what's the baseline for the net savings? So thank you for that.
Yeah, it's pretty much both, how did we do in terms of solar, we call it, during the course of the year, and where's the net metering credit value at this point? And it just steadily keeps creeping up. As I say, it's tied to the cost of electricity, so. And I would also note that we did have a rate case that we, Eversource introduced that would have changed that last year. They took, took them on and argued, became an intervenor in the case to argue against Eversource being allowed to rearrange the rate structure, which would have affected a devaluation of the net metering credit. So, we were successful in that. It's another aspect of what C V E C does for you. So, with that, I'm really finished with the, how'd you do this year presentation, and would move it over to the next listener. More questions?
Before we do that, let me just be sure, let me ask if there's any other questions on where we are on this. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For, before we move on to that next segment, for, for reasons both economic and environmental, we were talking before about the comprehensive plan and assembly. It would seem to me, especially if you're looking for an ask for an overlay, as of right, this should really be an important, it should be somewhere in the plan as they're moving along.
Do, I, I just don't want to make sure that it's clear that the as-of-right is something that Charlene is aware of, and it's, it's part of your voted-at-town meeting, for instance.
We're revising our local comprehensive plan, and it starts with a clean sheet of paper, and it moves its way forward as you do that, so.
I don't think you'll be able to take that piece of property out from the as-of-right signing.
Quite the opposite. We're looking to actually codify it, so.
I think what Don is saying, we just want to be sure we include that as part of the discussion. Sean?
Sandy McClarty, East Harwich. Is there a discussion about the end-of-life disposal of batteries and solar panels? And I'm a proponent of solar. I have solar in my house. I install solar. I know in Europe, there's a, a lot of discussion, and they actually put the cost on the manufacturers. In America, as far as I know, it's just disposed of as regular trash, and it can be classified as hazardous waste. So, going forward, it might be advisable to consider panels that are, have less... Like, I think most of the name brands don't have lead anymore, but a lot of them had lead. Silver can be considered as a toxin, and so different manufacturers do much better than others. So I was just wondering if that's a discussion, and just to be aware of it.
We'll throw that back to you, Liz.
At this point, we are looking twenty years from now, and we, that is not a part of the request for proposals. If towns dictate to us that that's so critical that they want to include it in a request for proposals, we could adjust the request for proposals. At this point, we're, we are seeing the same solar panels being recommended by almost all the developers. It's a select group of solar panels, I'm sure, is it Randy or Sandy? Sandy, probably, if he's a solar installer knows them. They're trying to bring in solar panels that are made in America. They don't exist. Panels are made in China. Now they're, now they moved the manufacturing to Taiwan and other places to avoid the tariff. But there, there's an awful lot to trying to select the right solar panel, and I, I'm not sure how to impose that kind of dictate in a request for proposals, but we can review it. I think that's the best I can answer is, it's, we're, we're looking so far in the future with the solar panels. The inverters are another matter. They're being recycled as best they can be. But I think by the time we get out to twenty years from now, that, first of all, the solar panels have a lifespan of twenty-five years, sorry, a warranty of twenty-five years, and then they go on for another ten years. So in thirty-five years, maybe there'll be a way to recycle these, these kinds of elements that are coming out of a, an older solar panel. I, I don't have a better answer than that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want a long discussion. Sandy raises an interesting point, because you can read environmental studies where it's questionable how much benefit solar does for the environment. If you consider the mining, the transport, the manufacture, the end-of-life discussion. So I, I've always been a little skeptical of some of it, and I guess I come to some comfort level saying, okay, it's not immediate, but it may help us in the future going forward. But there are a lot of questions going from the life cycle and, you know, all the other aspects that people don't think about. They think about the solar in the end, but not of producing it, transporting it, mining.
Right.
That are, there's only a couple good areas for lithium, for instance. Worried about taking, ruining some ecosystems.
Right.
It, it deserves a very broad discussion, but I stand to your point. I, I think about, I take some comfort in saying, at least we're moving in the right direction. I hope it'll sort it out.
And I think that's the kind of review that you could task C V E C to take on. We, as I point out, we are at your, we, we operate at your pleasure. So your representative is Leo. I'm sure he's listening. So Leo, you know, that's something that, everything that we do is by vote. So, board members bring up an option, and, and the other board members discuss if that's something that they want staff to take their time to do, and if, if it is, that's what, that's what I do. So, well, I'm, I, you know, I think you have an energy committee, and hopefully your energy committee could bring it back.
Okay, thank you. Ed, you have a question? Don?
Yeah, you know, there are environmental downsides to doing anything that involves any industrial process. But I think, you know, if you look at the energy produced through solar as opposed to the continued fracking of areas of our heartland, of the Canadian Shield, of desecrating the Arctic Tundra area to removing the ban on offshore drilling along Massachusetts and other areas, the East Coast. I think it's something we can probably work towards solving, rather than taking those extreme measures.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Any, any other questions at this point? We'll move on to phase two of your discussion.
All right, so Joe pretty much set it up. There was a letter that C V E C sent out. It's the C V E C round one adder. Last year, you may remember, I think it was two thousand seventeen was the first year we came to you and said, "We didn't have an adder on our round one projects," Harwich landfill being one of them. And that was because we thought round two was going to be fifty megawatts. It ended up being twelve megawatts. Didn't pay the bills on the round one projects. So we came to you and we asked for an adder, an operational adder, which is now imposed on all of C V E C's projects, to be imposed on the round one projects. And at that time, you voted yes. It was a half a penny. Last year, we said, "We're doing better. Let's reduce the round one adder to a quarter of a penny." And you approved it. "We are still doing better, but we're not ready to, to stand on our own two feet without that ran, round one operational adder yet. We're back to ask for the round one adder to be extended, one, that lesser amount of a quarter of a penny." And to, to understand how it would affect, to understand how it would affect Harwich, as I noted, you made, last year you made about, what was it, four hundred and...
Four hundred and seventeen, I think.
It would, and that was actually affected by the adder. So, you did, you paid the adder. We subtracted the adder from that amount already. And we'd be subtracting the same amount, so you could still look to be making that amount. But essentially, it's a cost to you of about eight-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. That's, that's less savings than you would see if we could stand on our own two feet without it.
Questions? Michael?
Liz?
Yeah.
The, I think it's the same question I ask always. How many, how many towns are in the round one project?
We have, one, two, three, four, five, six towns that are called hosts, but it also affects... Nine are what we call off-takers. Dukes County and so on. So they also see a slight lessening, lowering of their savings, too.
And how many have you been before, and how many have approved, and has anyone denied yet the...
The adder extension. No, not yet. We have been to Eastham, Provincetown, Dukes County, Barnstable County, Eastham, I'm not sure if I'm repeating myself already. Did I say Brewster? We, so it's almost easier to say who we haven't been to yet. Oh, I can use my list. We have not been to Chatham yet, Town of Barnstable, and we may not go to the Town of Barnstable, frankly, because the, the way they operate, it's usually a decision that the town administrator makes at this point. We go to Tisbury tomorrow, but Brewster has approved. Chilmark has approved. Monomoy Schools has approved. I go to Oak Bluffs next week, and Yarmouth has approved. So there's only like four or five that I have left to appear in front of.
Michael?
And I only ask, because I think in the past, we've, we've voted and we've approved it based on all towns doing it. If they don't do it, then, then we have another conversation.
And that would be expected. I mean, we... I mean, we, I think we agreed that if we did have a hiccup like that, we would come back to you. And we would. I mean, again, there's no hidden agenda, because your board, you are the board, so you'd be the first to know that, lo and behold, we have a town that's got an objection for some reason.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
And I only mentioned, Liz, like, like the golf course thing, which I'm gonna, I'll send you an email, we haven't had an update on the golf course.
That's one reason I'm here, though.
And we wouldn't get a update necessarily on whether every town approved it.
Understood. And this is something that plagues us. We are, as I say, here for you. We really want to keep the communication with the boards open. We have representatives on our, on our, on our, our board, but they're busy, you're busy. So I almost say, please, pick up your phone, call me. I'm totally accessible, 24/7. The cellphone is on me. So let's keep the communication going, even if it's a little slow on, at the town level, because, yeah, this is a critical point for you with the, with the projects in round four. You have some, you have a lion's share of our projects in round four, and they're beautiful projects. We signed the contracts, as you know. Thank you for all making that happen. And a lot of the interconnection applications have gone in to Eversource, and we're hoping to get results from that in the next few, in a month. And that will allow us to then get the permitting going, which will, you'll hear more about these projects, because we'll be here at the town level to get permits.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Liz? Comments? Any motion?
I move that we approve round one adder extension of a quarter of a penny, providing all other towns participate.
Second?
And I just add, for FY21.
For FY21.
21. Anyone from the audience, more comments?
For the chair to sign.
For the chair to sign. Okay. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass? Thank you, Liz.
You're quite welcome, and please invite me back anytime.
I'll email it to you.
Okay. Moving on then to ABCC holiday memo. So I read this, Jill, I guess you're just reminding us to be good people, is that?
Well, actually, this is something we, while we were doing the renewal process, and I'd be remiss if I didn't give a thanks to Danielle Delaney, who's done a great job in Anne Zapsen's, getting, keeping us on track for the renewals. While she was working on applications, this notice came in from the ABCC. So we'll be sending this out to all licensed establishments. It's about happy hours and private parties. Spoiler alert, there are none, technically speaking.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Comments on that? We, we all have an action on that, we're just, that was informational, but thank you, Jill. Departmental reports? I'll turn it back to you, Jill. You have anything for?
None tonight. We'll have at least one for next week.
Okay. Move on to selectmen's reports. Steve?
Just a comment. I did have a chance to go to the cultural center and a number of other things over the weekend, but I was just so impressed with the cultural center. Huge turnout. Had a good chance to talk to a number of the different people that have rented space there, and they just couldn't stop talking about how credit went, so I was very impressed with it.
Thank you. Michael?
I just would mimic Stephen's comments. I went as well, and it was quite impressive to drive into that parking lot and around to the elementary school and have to turn around and do a.
Thanks, buddy.
But a lot of residents used that building, and I think it was a very good event. Second, I was, along with the rest of the selectmen, except for you, Larry, at the dedication to fire station two. And couldn't be more proud of this town with how many people went, and the spoke, and the history of the Crolls donating the land. But absolutely amazing event, with amazing participation from the residents and town employees, as well as other fire departments chiefs, and Ed did a great job with the selectmen's speech. But, and great fire station. The town should be proud.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I can confirm that you don't want to fly back from Madison, Wisconsin, through O'Hare during a snowstorm. But Ed?
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mike. I thought the dedication ceremony was spectacular, as is the facility itself. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the cultural center, because I was stuck over at the community center with the equally vibrant Kiwanis Community Market. We ought to maybe work on our dates next year.
Before I get to you, Don, I see Dave in the audience. You were taking pictures of that, of the, of the opening? Are you going to publish that, or what's, what's your intent there, so we all see a piece of that action?
So I didn't take that many pictures, because it wasn't really feasible for me. Caleb, you were there, correct?
Yeah.
So it's, there are at least two videos out there that I know of, plus.
And those will be on Channel 18?
Yeah. And plus, several people are taking photos. As we get the photos collected, we'll either put them on Facebook or make them available on the website.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
And, and thank you for the comments. It was, it was a great turnout. We were, Chief Clark and I were, you know, very appreciative of, of the support of the board, as well as the citizens. It was, we had no idea what to expect, so to have that many people there was, was amazing.
Good. Thank you, Dave. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to remind everybody that on Wednesday, December 4th, at 4:00 PM, there's going to be the ordinance discussion with the Assembly of Delegates about the DCPC.
Do you plan to attend?
I do.
Okay.
We're all welcome.
We're all welcome.
And where is that located?
The East Wing Conference Center this time. It's up on the hill where Stephen.
The old jail?
Yeah.
The old jail?
You'd never know it was the old jail from that, from what it looks like now.
Anything else? If not, Ed?
It's Friday night.
I mentioned it earlier.
Okay. Good.
Again?
Again.
Same answer I had.
So again, to just remind everyone, Friday night is the tree lighting in Down Park at 5:15 to 6:00, and then Santa arrives on fire truck, 6:15, and then there's quite a lot going on all weekend, but it's all on our website.
Yeah. The Christmas light is, is an special event, so it's nice.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.